It's 5:05 and I'll take the roll. Garcia?
Here.
Gebhardt? Marquis?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Sergeant?
Here.
Sweeney Moran?
Here.
Zess?
Here.
All right, so thanks everyone for being here and we have a single topic on today's board session, which is to look at the redistricting of the Board of Education Director District. We undertake this when there are changes in the population throughout our district and we change the lines to better reflect where people are living. So Rob, do you want to walk us through this?
Yes, Glenn is getting set up. Glenn Segru will be presenting today and so as soon as he is ready to go, Glenn give us a thumbs up and we'll get going.
Great, thank you.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
This is, let's go back up here. Okay, so this is the redistricting of the Board Director District boundaries, which is required by the state to be done every four years, or at least look at it every four years, and see how the population balance is between the different Director District boundaries as they exist. Now this is total population. This isn't kids or families or like this. This is related to voting and representation, so this is total population within BVSD. So the methodology, basically we get housing counts from parcel records. We also use American Community Survey for Gilpin County, since the parcel data isn't very complete for that location. We also supplement that with additional data from City of Boulder and Colorado Department of Public Health for multifamily rentals and group housing, because those are a little bit difficult to pick up in the assessor's records. Occupancy and average household rates are applied to those units and those are obtained this year from the State Demography Office. And the results of this were verified against other sources to determine their accuracy and deemed to be accurate enough for this study. So, the analysis itself, the population of BVSD in 2020 is estimated to be about 242,000. Historically, when we look at these boundaries, we try to keep each of the boundaries within 3% to meet state requirements. And Exhibit A in your packet, if you review that, shows the current boundaries and they're pretty far off from the 3%. So a readjustment this year is definitely warranted. I think District G was in double digits and District F as well was pretty high as well, primarily from new home construction. So because of these significant variations, a redraw is definitely required. And in fact, all the years I've been doing this, I've never had one where it didn't have a redraw. So, going on to the boundary scenarios themselves. So I have these labeled redistricting goals. However, the first one is part of the statute and I guess you could qualify it as a requirement as such, that the boundaries be contiguous, compact, and nearly as equal as possible in population. Also embedded in this is that we maintain the current board members within their respective districts, so we don't want to move boundaries so that somebody's in a different district than they're in, or we have two people on boundary. So we do make sure that in all of the scenarios do qualify as that.
Yeah, I have a question about that. So for board members whose terms are up, will it still, but are eligible to run, like me, would it still, would you still work to keep us in our districts, or since the position comes technically open, you could possibly move it?
We still keep them within the existing boundary. Basically, I take the current board members right now and I put a big marker where each are located and I make sure no boundaries cross over that.
Okay, thank you.
So then moving on, there's also historic goals that we've used in BVSD. None of these are absolute, they're just things that we strive for in the process of doing this. We minimize the changes to existing boundaries as much as possible. We've tried to do that, utilize natural and obvious borders, and also reflect communities of interest. I usually qualify that as municipalities and high school feeders as much as possible. Can trickle down to middle and elementary if we can, but that's usually pretty difficult to do when balancing the populations. So, Scenario 1, moving on, and that's what it looks like and I'll come back to it and reference it. One thing I do need to point out is the dark black lines on all of the scenarios are the existing boundaries. The colored areas represent the proposal under the scenario. So A and C right here is an obvious one, we can see, if you can see my cursor, the black line is the existing boundary, C, the lighter area here means that it's proposing to move an area that's in C now into District A. So with that said, Scenario 1.
Could you please repeat that? I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
Okay, I'll get a little closer. So, the dark black lines represent the existing Director District boundaries as they are today. And the different colors represent what this scenario, the proposed change is under this scenario. So here's the black line here. I know my cursor looks pretty small there. Yeah, and here, you can see the light blue is associated with A, so, and the dark blue is associated with C. So in this case, we're looking at moving this area here into A, and it's currently in C. Whoops.
Thank you. Yeah. Can't see, makes it.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Okay. So Scenario 1, this scenario, we're attempting to minimize changes to the existing boundaries as much as we can. And we start by trying to get some of the population, whoops. There we go. Those cursors and cursors. Okay. We're trying to get the population in G, which is the highest population of the current boundaries, and we are trying, and we take some of that population out, and in this scenario, we put them in D, in this area here, north of Isabella Road. And also, this block here is also proposed to go from G to D as well. And actually, it still doesn't take enough population out of G, so we push east with District E a little bit as well. I can say this area here in District E still maintains, stays in Monarch, the Monarch feeder system, so it's a pretty logical move. Where this area north of Isabella is currently in Centaurus feeder system, and it'd be moving into D, which would be more associated with Boulder High and the Fairview split area as well. Other changes would be this area here between C and F. So F was another high population zone, and it needs to shed some population, and in this case, we go here to C in this area as well. That's also a pretty natural split. C has most of the Town of Superior, not quite all of it, but most of it, so this basically just adds a little more of Superior into District C. Moving on, A is a little low, so it takes a little more population, this is the one we talked about before, from C and puts it into A there. And going up, higher up, D, because it's gaining some population, needs to lose some, and so in this scenario, we put some additional in B, which is also a little low as well. So when we balance these all out, they all maintain within about 3% variation between all of the districts. The pros of this one is it maintains the current boundaries to a large degree, maintains community of interest also to a large degree, and the lands along E and G, right here, stay within the Monarch feeder. Really bring a chunk of the Monarch feeder back into E, which is representative of Lewisville and Monarch for the most part. Okay. Moving on to Scenario 2. Scenario 2 has a different set of goals. Rather than completely focusing on minimizing changes, this scenario looks at trying to break up some of the representation in A of CU college students, which are pretty concentrated in A. There's been some concern in the past from the Board about the concentration of students in A, so we looked to see what we can do to break that up. In order to do this, I tried to look for some concentrations that are on the edge of the CU campus, and the two that I found would be Williams Village down here along 36, and this little tiny, they're very small here, but they're very densely populated. This is basically graduate family housing with some additional private apartments as well, but most of those serve CU students as well. So in order to take those out of A, we need to gain population that pushes A down into C on the southern part here a little bit, and also pushes A into, north of Arapahoe, into what's currently B. Arapahoe is the dividing line between Casey and Manhattan. In doing that, that also requires some additional balance in the mountain areas between B and C. So going forward, most of the rest of the district is very close to Scenario 1 otherwise. So the pros is it does distribute the concentration of CU students in A to B and C, maintains communities of interest to a good degree, and similar to Scenario 1, E and G lands added to E from G are within the Monarch feeder. The cons, A becomes less compact, so if we look at this, A spiders out a little bit more. I don't know that it, I wouldn't say it is really bad compared to the state statute, which really wants to prevent kind of a flagpole situation, or something really branching out, but it's not as compact as it used to be. If you look at A here in the black line. The other con to this is, so we're also looking at a scenario with more overall boundary changes than Scenario 1. And in addition to Scenario 1, lands north of Isabella, which are historically related to Centaurus feeder, are now moved to D, which is related to Boulder High, more affiliated with Boulder High and Boulder. So Scenario 3, there's two more. Scenario 3 is more akin to Scenario 1 in that it strives to minimize the boundary changes overall, and really, it's very similar to it, other than instead of trying to solve the population issue in G in the north, it pushes E into the south, and into some lands that are actually within Lafayette city limits. In doing this, D needs to take additional populations from E down here on the corner of Arapahoe and 95th. And then D also takes this small segment from G as well. Otherwise, this scenario is pretty similar to Scenario 1. So really, between 1 and 2, it's a matter of solving that, the population in G by using, taking lands in the north in Scenario 1, or the south in Scenario 2. So the pros are very similar to Scenario 1, maintains current boundaries, minimizes disruption to communities, but this one maintains the lands north of Isabella Road in G and its association with Centaurus feeder. But as a trade-off, the lands south of South Boulder Road within Centaurus feeder are moved into E, which is more closely associated with Monarch High and Lewisville. And our last scenario, Scenario 4, this one is more akin to Scenario 2 in that it tries to break, I'm sorry, tries to break up the concentration in, of CU students in A, but does it in a slightly different way. So here, we also focus on Williams Village and graduate family housing in the north, but in order to make up some of that population for A, A takes this small, very dense chunk from E. But that allows it to not push into B and stay below Arapahoe. Much of the changes in C are very similar between A and C. This does make changes, pushes some additional changes off into E as it tries to balance its population. Now it needs to take some additional land area from D in order to get that population. And this area north above Arapahoe, and push west a little bit as well. To give a little perspective, Centaurus's boundary is about right here, and Angivines is pretty much 95th through here. In addition, there's also a little chunk E needs to get from Superior to balance out. Although this is in the Town of Superior, it is in the Monarch K8 feeder. This chunk is basically the Superior Town Center development, which is a newer development being built right now, right off 36. We see C and F are very similar as the other scenarios, and D pushes east above Isabella in this one as well, but we have a little different scenario in the mountain area, where C needs to push into B and take some area above Left Hand Canyon. Pros is it distributes the concentration of CU students again, similar to Scenario 2, although this one does keep District A a little more compact than Scenario 2. Doesn't spider out quite as much going north into B. Excuse me. And it keeps A entirely below Arapahoe Road, which is the dividing line between Casey and Manhattan, so it protects that community of interest. And lands added to E and G are within the Monarch feeder, that's something consistent to all of the scenarios. The cons is, again, this presents more overall boundary change than Scenarios 1 or 3, and the lands north of Isabella within Centaurus feeder are moved to D, which is more closely associated with Boulder High. So those are the four scenarios. I think the real takeaways from it are that Scenario 1 and 3 better minimize changes, minimize change to the overall boundaries as they exist today. It's really a matter of a trade-off between whether you add lands from the north, go back here, in the north above Isabella to D, or in the south from G to E, which gets parts of Lafayette in there. Scenarios 2 and 4 really focus on additional, on breaking up the concentration of CU students at the cost of maybe more change overall to the system. And I think C, here, let me go back up. So, and Scenario 4 does result in a little more compact District A, and it also keeps things below Arapahoe, at the expense of more changes out east in District E. Now, when looking at these, and the four scenarios, I think any one of them can work pretty well. I personally have a preference for Scenario 4. I think breaking up A has, is a good goal, to break up the concentration of CU students there, and I think this one is a little more preferable in keeping a compact A, and the changes in the mountains aren't quite as dramatic as in 2, which takes more lands here. It's a little more of an awkward exchange of land, and I think the changes in, go through here, in E aren't too drastic. Of course, this is already in Boulder, or a lot of the east Boulder area is in E already. And also, these lands here are in a split feeder and have usually been pulled back and forth between the various feeders over the years, since they aren't really in a defined feeder. So, that is my review, and I'd welcome any questions.
Great, thank you so much Glenn. And let me try to switch to gallery view. Does anyone have any questions? I think I can see you all.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Richard. It's hard to hear you.
Hard to hear me? Can you hear me better now, since I'm closer to the mic?
Yeah.
Yeah? Yes or no? My question is, this is changing district boundaries, and you keep mentioning feeder areas like from Centaurus going to Boulder High, et cetera. It's not changing the attendance boundaries, is it? Did you hear my question?
Tina, we can't hear Richard at all.
Oh, I can hear him. Okay.
Well, let me try something else here. I got the earphones, like people were suggesting that maybe that would work, but apparently it's not. So, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
I know you can, Tina, but.
Barely. It's still really difficult to understand and hear Richard.
Hold on. How about, now, can you hear me better?
That's better.
Much better.
All right, I'm taking these things off. My question was, if you change, as you're changing district boundaries, does that change the attendance boundaries as well?
No, it does not.
It does not?
No, it does not.
Okay, great. That's the question I had.
Okay. Next, Lisa.
Yeah, I had had a, oh, sorry, that's louder than anticipated. I had had a hope for how A might expand that isn't reflected in any of these scenarios. Is that worth the conversation, or are we just choosing which scenario of these we prefer?
So I think this is to just review the scenarios and gather some input, and then decide how many scenarios to bring forward at a later board meeting.
Okay.
Lisa, did you want to give some feedback?
Sorry, I wasn't, I thought he was saying that we were just choosing, sure. So I, it had been my hope with District A that I would be expanding there to the west from Foothills up to 55th to encompass more of the populations that I'm already serving in schools, rather than moving into new areas. Is that something that was considered?
Yeah, it's something we're considering in the scenario.
Okay, wait, let's circle back here on this. So Lisa, you're thinking of something different than the four scenarios, correct?
Well, yes, like I said, I don't understand if that's, if we're having those conversations, but I guess I'm a little confused by the answer, but is that something that could be considered, or is that off the table?
Well, we can look at different boundary scenarios, if we need to add or subtract to it, but it is a delicate balancing act. When you move something around, then you have to make it up somewhere else. So, you know, it's not an issue of just moving lines. If you take population out of one area, you have to balance it out with the other districts somewhere else. And currently, we're working with mostly census blocks and census block groups as the basis, so if we have to split those up, it gets, we lose some of that integrity of the data in having to like shave off a part of one of those blocks that's not already grouped with the data. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, I appreciate that. I just also feel like A is sort of a small squirmy district in the middle of everything, and the more that there were, you know, sort of specific populations in schools that are addressed by each Director District, rather than having everything split, it feels to me like there's value in that, but I understand you're saying that may not be possible.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. I just wanted to thank Glenn for doing all this work, because I think it probably took quite a bit of effort, and I do appreciate the idea of making A less compact, just because CU students generally tend not to be interested in running for school boards, so sort of thank you. And, well Kathy, did you have a question, or are you just putting on your mask?
I've been chewing, and I couldn't get my.
Okay, so what is the next step?
So timing is, basically, the state statutes require us to be done by the end of the year. And at some point, well, I think in past years, we bring forward a resolution with a chosen scenario, and we vote on that resolution for approval.
Okay.
So I mean, the next steps can be, we could either go straight to the action item for one scenario if the Board thought there was a clear winner right now, or we could bring a certain set of these before the Board possibly as a study item, or something like that, to do further review.
Okay. I mean, I feel like we got a recommendation, which I personally am fine with, I don't have any reason not to support it, but any other comments about that, Board members? No? Kidding. I can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, my mute thing was too low. Anyway, so other than, you know, making sure we, every district has as close as possible population, and making sure that you don't put so many CU students together that you can't get a good. Okay, I don't know what that was. So that we have, you know, a population that's likely to, you know, produce people So that we have, you know, a population that's likely to, you know, produce people who are really interested in running for school board. What impact does that have on either the board members or the public?
Well, I would say that would mean that in, in the current situation, you've got a large population in A that doesn't typically participate to the same levels as I think many of the other populations throughout...
Wait, could you say, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
So currently, you've got a concentration of CU students in A.
Yeah.
So it's really, in a way, you could almost argue that it's like taking population out of that district, because they only have so many people who are more likely to participate in local politics, and especially school district politics compared to the other districts. So you could say that it's unfair in that way.
Right, yeah, and I, I got that, but I just wondered, I mean, are, the people in the general public, is anybody going to care about this?
So far, we've had, in the past, we've had very little public input.
Okay, I'm just curious of, you know, how much we really have to think about one over the other, in terms of its impact.
Sure, and, I mean, a lot of it has to do with really distributing representation throughout the district equitably, and that's a big part of it. I can say that other districts have had, this can be a contentious issue, but it has not in BVSD, to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you, Glenn.
Hey Glenn, just a quick question and clarification for the board. So, in other school districts across the state of Colorado, are there single-member districts where only the members who live within a district vote for those folks that are running for school board, as opposed to here in Boulder Valley, where the entire district votes for every single school board member?
I think I'd have to maybe defer to Kathleen on that, if she knows specifically, I do know we're at large, but is that...
I'll confirm the citation, but by state law, in every district, right? Oh, well, no, I'm gonna find this, I'm gonna find the site.
I'm just trying to clarify, like to Kitty's point, to what extent does this impact the public? Does this impact the school board, does it impact, you know, and in other states, single-member districts were very prevalent, which, you know, this is a really incredibly big deal, right, when you think about these things, because only, so Kitty, only those that were in District F would vote for District F, but that's not our case, right? So, I think it's just a, a meeting, meeting the statutory requirements, right, and then bringing something to the board if there's any problems we're trying to look at and solve, seems to me that the issue in front of us that we're looking to solve is to better diversify the student population of CU, so they're better represented, not just in one sole district, but in multiple districts.
Yeah.
And, and then to the extent that, also Lisa brought up another issue in regards to A being able to be more of a set of schools that she supports, but from what you're saying, if you add, then you have to take away from somewhere else, too.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
That, okay.
Exactly.
And do we look at, like the racial makeup of the districts at all? Just making sure that we're not creating a situation where it's less likely? Well, I guess all the votes are at large, so it doesn't matter. Right, okay.
Yeah, they're...
I'll scratch that question.
They're at large, yeah.
Right, and I think it's really important for it to be at large, for that reason.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, if you have a question after this, please reach out to Rob, and he can help out, and I believe this is the only topic for our work session, is that correct? So shall we leave and reconvene in 20 minutes? Okay, I'll see you in 20 minutes.